All right, the meeting is open since it's being recorded. Now when you say yes. Uh we were heard about twice I think. So first up, we have meeting minutes, so I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of December eleventh as written. Any discussion? All favor or hi? Um we can. With that with the fraction. I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of December eighteen twenty twenty-three as amended, is there a second? Second. Any discussion on favor?
Hi.
Have you sign there? All right. Yeah, it has you on Zoom. All right, any island's participation I mean going forward? Okay, so we are doing a joint um meeting tonight with the water department, you guys want to come and join us at the day table?
Sure.
Um just, we have some complaints for all of our listeners at home that they can't hear us because we're talking into the microphone, so just.
Okay.
Remember that.
Or you can move that down to the middle.
All right, so. Do you guys care if we skip down to new business water? Do that yet? All right, so um motion to move to new business um A one and two, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, so um well, thank you guys for coming, uh thank you guys for coming, Chester, I appreciate it.
Thank you for moving us to the top of the list.
Yeah, no problem, I know, everyone wants to be home. Um so we wanted to talk about where we're at with the um shared water grant. I know that there's been some lively discussion about it um the last couple of weeks. And um some back and forth with the purchase of a truck with the the funds. Um we sort of put a hold on things for right now until we make sure that that is going to be supported by the grant, we just want to make sure that that is the case before. Um we continue to spend anything out of that fund. So um. Ira, do you want to fill us in on where we're at with the 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 truck that was purchased currently is not being supported by the grant, it's not shared, is that correct? It's not a shared?
Well, so there's kind of two issues, one is that the budget that was provided. When the grant was submitted did not include the purchase of a truck in it.
Okay.
That doesn't necessarily mean that ultimately that purchase. Couldn't be accepted by DLS, I'm not, I'm not DLS, I don't.
Yeah.
You know, I have no idea. But the the bigger issue is that at this point in time, there is not any activity related to the primary objective of this. Effort of of the grant, which is to share the services of one or more water operators of some sort, so. Uh what Sean Cronin, who's a deputy. Uh deputy commissioner of the Division of Local Services has said, pretty much no one turns that uh. You know, that's, that's really what needs to happen.
Forward with the.
Forward with the. Um I think you have any. Doing with any um. Of of the grant funding that goes toward the purchase of equipment that he's looking for. Um you know, the sharing of of those services.
So do we have a water operator hired yet for that position or we're still in the process of that?
There's discrepancies because.
Okay.
We had a meeting on June twenty-second with uh Chester.
Okay.
And we agreed that the shared operator would be Stephen Grong- Grogan.
Brunden.
Brunden.
Okay.
Who who was already employed by Blanford, and he's a, he's a licensed operator.
Okay.
However, the agreement was already signed by Chester prior to that meeting.
Okay.
And. I I question why we had that meeting if the if the agreement was already signed.
To to um approve of Steve Steven being the water operator.
Well, like I'm saying, that that the agreement that's that's here in this paperwork um. Was already signed by Chester and it was already an agreement.
Okay.
Then we had a meeting um because. Our commission drafted a letter saying we we didn't think this was a good idea for Blanford.
Okay.
And we submitted that to the select board.
When was this, this was way back, we're talking before that.
This was May.
Okay.
It was May.
Yeah.
And then in June, we, they came back for another meeting. I I call it a pretty pleased meeting because they didn't like that we weren't uh interested in this. And at that meeting, there was a lot of things that were discussed that were different from previous.
Okay.
But none of those things ever came to fruition, they they just disappeared.
Okay.
Uh for instance, that Stephen Grand- Granden would be our shared operator. And um the budget which Ira talked about is right here.
Yeah.
And that was put together when the grant was applied for.
Yeah.
Which was a long time ago and things that are that are earmarked here have already been taken care of. For instance, uh we have forty-eight thousand dollars for turbidity meters that we acquired since then.
Okay.
So, right, so, so, you know.
No, we.
No, no.
We, no, we.
So purchased through Blanford Water.
They were, we got.
Arco funding?
No, we had a um a lightning strike, an energy surge in the plant.
Oh, with an insurance.
And it blew out.
Okay.
All of a lot of equipment we had, and the turbometers were one of them.
Okay.
So they were replaced.
Okay.
The reason I bring that up is because. You know, that clears up forty-eight thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So that budget was agreed upon, uh not by us, not by Blanford Water, but somebody because it was submitted. And they were more than.
That was part of the grant process.
Yes, yes, and they were more than happy to have us purchase five turbidity meters, which would only serve Blanford. But a truck would serve the the grant purpose because the the operator, the shared operator could use that truck to to carry himself and equipment. Between Blanford and Chester.
Mm-hmm.
We feel that that's more in line with the grant uh theme than the turbidity meters would have meant.
I see what you're saying. I think part of the concern with the truck was that there um. Part of the discussion was originally that it wasn't a shared vehicle. Um that was what now, that's what came to our attention, was that it wasn't a shared vehicle, if it's agreed to be that, then I don't think it's as much of a concern. Um and that would be something we would have to talk with Sean Cronin about, make sure that that's applicable with the grant funds. But um backing up a little, I know you were talking about um. That originally you weren't interested, I know that when when uh the select board signs the MOU, I I thought, I was under the impression that we had sort of like. Um come together and sort of mediated some of the differences and come to a general, you know, um agreeing and to move forward with it. Is there, are there still things that are? Not that that were that were having situations with between Blanford and Chester?
We'd we'd almost have to go back to the June twenty-second meeting between Blanford and Chester and and go over the things we discussed then because. It, the MOU was already signed prior to that meeting. Um and. Was it signed by Blanford? Because I have a copy that is signed only but by Chester.
It was signed by Blanford, um I think Brad was at that meeting, yeah.
The copy that was sent back to us by the state is not special for, this project is not signed by Blanford, it's only signed by Chester.
It was approved by Blanford, I think that Chester, the.
No, you know, no, this is before that, so for that list right there, for the for the probably money will be spent. Coming from Steve, from the state, his copy, which he has, is not even signed by Blanford.
It's signed by Chester.
Okay.
On May twenty-third, but no signatures.
By both, okay, yeah.
That's the state's copy.
Okay.
Right, and they probably got a copy before uh.
Yeah. I know that it, there was a pause in it because like I said, there was some, I know you had some concerns, so there was some discussion had before. Um Blanford had agreed and the select board then signed it, so that must have been a later copy. Um are you guys meeting as joint boards to discuss concerns or spending going forward?
Well, another thing that was discussed was that we were to hire an operator together.
Yeah.
But apparently one has already been hired. Uh I've only heard of this, that that there's an operator that doesn't have a driver's license.
Okay, is there another operator?
Us, we didn't hire.
Hired or?
But just.
Go ahead.
Chester has an operator in training.
Okay.
Who would evolve out of the partnership for midterm practice.
Oh, to the gateway, yeah, okay. Okay, and so he would be working under the water operator.
Under the license or.
Okay. Okay, and so, but Chester has agreed that Steve would be that um.
Operator.
Operator.
He could certainly be a shared operator.
Okay.
I think to 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 just back up for a second to the MOU that. Both boards have got signed, I think that's the key. Um operating continent, that role should be operating, not.
Yeah.
And that identifies with Steve. Ronland.
Ronden.
Okay.
That has to be the shared operator, now that has precluded our operating insurance. More than willing to to meet the obligations of the grant and do whatever we need to do to to make this work out.
Okay.
I think that the next logical step and that I can see is that we got to get together these two uh commissions or with the superintendent Gordon.
Yeah.
And and work out the the scope and schedule for twenty of them beneath the letter and spirit of it.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I I thought the grant was to split one shared licensed operator, am I correct on that?
Uh I think there's more to it than just that, but I think that's.
I've never seen anything on it, so anyways. My, that's what I thought was brought to us that night, and you guys should be making decisions together for for both water departments. Not you getting one and we getting one, now, so now if you you get this grant for for paying this guy. We're gonna, we're gonna, you're gonna pay your half and then half, and we wanted a guy that could get a full-time job, didn't we? Basically. Well, am I wrong in thinking that?
The last we knew, basically we were gonna all use Steve Gronin as basically the shared OIT between the two towns, which is basically. And and like I said, it's another reason why we purchased the truck, because you can't ask him to drive between Blanford and Chester. So we purchased the truck, it would be owned by Blanford, but basically it would be used to basically drive over there. And we'd figure out mileage or something over there and then they would. We'd be reimbursed for mileage when we used it over there or something like that.
So so I think you guys got to sit down and talk with something and present it to us, because I I don't, it looks shady to me.
Well, I think.
Personally. I'll tell you how I feel.
In defense of that, I know that we've all been very supportive of this training program that's going on at Gateway, so I think that um. The water operator coming from this training program and working under a licensed water operator is sort of what. We've all been talking about and hoping for that program to. To come to.
Can I just make one clarification?
Mm-hmm.
Both towns have a water operator in training, in Blanford it's Steve.
Oh, Steve is already licensed.
Steve's an OIT two training.
Yes, so he is.
And he's.
Okay.
He's got about four and a half years.
So he's been training for a little while now.
Yeah.
So he's literally got more experience than all the rest of it, but he is a water operator in training. Um. What's his name?
Isaiah.
Isaiah, who's just out of high school, went to that. Force at at Gateway.
Mm-hmm.
Is also an OIT.
But just starting out, but though first.
Starting out, so you know.
Does he have?
Doesn't even have a driver's.
Oh, I see.
No, does he have his driver's license?
Oh.
He's in the process of getting it.
So right now, he wouldn't even meet our job qualifications, we wouldn't apply for a job because we have job descriptions and.
Now, is is he a licensed operator?
No.
No.
He's an OIT.
He's an apprentice.
So he's completed the program through Gateway, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. So.
And now he's doing like an intern. You gotta do have five years to go.
He graduates from being an intern into an operator in training, he was an intern.
Four years.
He graduated from gateway.
You said four and a half.
Now an operator in training.
Okay.
And he does basically distribution.
So do you remember that program working through what we were doing on, and Christmas, Smitty was here, superintendent, talking to us about what the kids were doing through Gateway?
Yeah, and. See, I I I'm I'm trying to follow the license, he's Isaiah, I I.
Isaiah.
Isaiah. He is not licensed, so he's in training to get a license.
He has a certification as an operator in training.
In training.
Nurse permit, does he have OIT one in training yet?
So that he still has to work under somebody, does he not?
So the certification is one thing, does he have the OIT one, which is an operator in training one, then become a a licensed one, then an OIT two, then a licensed two. So he has a certification, which means he completed the course, but to get the actual OIT one yet.
I haven't seen it, so I can't tell you, that's a one or two.
I have a one. I think the point is that we, you know, that. I know Blanford has been, and I I'm assuming Chester too, really wanting to support that, so if he's in a position where he's, you know, getting that driver's license and whatever else he needs, move up, I think that. We've all, I know that the select board has really been in support of taking people in Gateway, in our community and training them for these jobs where there's a high knee. Um for local people, so I don't, I don't want to step on toes of that, if there's a way to merge that. To be working together under the scope of the grant, then that's great. Um I think that that's clearly what needs to happen is that, you know, we need to sit down with both boards to make sure that. We're all on the same page going forward.
I think I think it's a matter of time.
Okay.
If if Isaiah doesn't have the requirements of landing his plant, or if he can't be sharing with Blanford.
Mm-hmm.
Um today.
Okay.
Let's say in three months, he's got those, perhaps that would become a possibility.
Mm-hmm.
Chester's fine with sharing their operator in training.
Mm-hmm.
So that we can comply with the spirit of the grant, we we'd like to keep the grant, keep the spirit of it.
Yeah.
So if uh if we could arrange for the floor of the plant with their operator in training, next year, then why would we come to that?
Okay.
That would be fine, but let's just get it started, so we'll comply with the spirit of it, as time goes by, if there's a need for. Um some distribution work in Blanford that our operator in training could help with, we're happy to share, we're happy to, you know. Work that, I mean, way back when when the grant was first established, the key reason for it, the principle of it was. Both Blanford and Chester were concerned about succession plans.
Yeah.
And we had operators that were nearing retirement, retirement, and how can we find a new operator, so that was the basis of putting shared operators into this full grant process. Uh and then things sort of evolved with the Gateway program of training, folks that were. Graduating, they could come to the program, and that's that's worked out very well.
Mm-hmm.
So we're just happy to comply with the spirit of it, and if we can start to put days on the page for when. Your operator training can help Chester out on a project, we're happy to do that.
Okay. Um, oh, go on.
Uh just just a question, I, because uh. He, I Isha is. Ira.
Isaiah.
I I. And anyways, uh so he's in training, so he he has to have supervision.
That's correct.
Okay, and the supervisor is Steve? That's.
No.
You know, if he was at Blanford, the supervisor more likely would be Gordon.
Okay, so. Other, so I'm I'm just trying to get it in my mind in the chain of command here, so as. Ira progresses and gets. As this young man or woman progresses.
Yes.
All right, and he gets his uh license for, what is it, class one or?
Yeah, just call it wire license, there's there's multiple.
Yeah.
Exponent.
So so otherwise, until he has all his licenses, he's still going to be working under Gordon's sake.
Sure.
All right.
So. I don't, I don't see what the tip of lips outside of a truck being purchased. What 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 is uh? Your 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 problem with this, that's what I'm wondering.
We don't have a problem, we're wondering what the problem is with the truck, um we've been told that it it doesn't align with the the um. The spirit of the grant.
Mm-hmm.
But we feel like it does, a- and it does even more than some of the things that were on the budget.
So what's to keep Blanford and Chester sitting down with the uh grant people? To say, hey, look, we're we're complying, all right? I I I don't understand why they would say the grant is not covering the truck if the truck is being used for that purpose.
So I think that it's been sort of lack of clear communication, so when the truck was purchased, I don't think Chester was aware of the purchase. Blanford purchased it, the first communication I heard was it was a purchase just for the Blanford Water Department. Then when we began began to discuss, well, then that's not going to work with the grant funding, it was, okay, well, we can shift that and it can be a shared situation. However, it wasn't communicated so prior to the purchase, so that leads me to my next question is. In the scope of this grant, because it's a shared grant, it seems like. We should be communicating pretty clearly before purchases are made with that grant money, both on our end with the truck and your end with the operator, I think that. That that's probably something that needs to be weeded out, um definitely not interested in returning the grant, just like you said, I think that that opens up. Um sort of Pandora's box to us not uh receiving grants down the road, that it looks really bad.
Well, on the twenty-second, the last meeting we had, we all sat down, we discussed it, and we we were still talking about, you know, remember the wish lists, what we want, stuff like that. We've actually purchased a lot of the stuff we talked about, this is stuff that we need.
Through the grant fund?
Yeah. So, and like I said, this paper right here, up until, how long ago was it, we never really saw that. So, um.
What what paper is that?
The the budget that went along with the application for the grant.
That never came, we never saw that until we got it, you got it from Steve.
There's certain, Sean, there's certain things on here that we would have questioned, no doubt. Because you have, you have line items for part-time water operators, part-time laborers. We would have questioned that because.
So that's why I just have to captain say that. That budget and the entire grant was put together, I I wrote the grant, it was approved in both towns by both boards, it was discussed in in multiple. Uh meetings of of the two boards, and if you don't recall, or if you never saw it, I I can't speak to that, but it was.
Well, we talked about a lot of things, but for, like I said, the last time we 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 didn't think it was finalized. I mean, I'm not sure about you guys, but with with, we didn't think it was finalized because we were still talking about. Um confined space equipment, um yeah, uh the fall prevention equipment, I mean, and that's, that was a nine thousand dollar purchase that we made.
I didn't, I didn't.
There was.
I didn't make up the request for turbidity meters in in Blanford at the time a year ago, I didn't know what a turbidity meter was, so, you know, I. It didn't come, it came from you folks. That's what you requested.
I think we kind of mentioned it, but I don't think we.
So I think going forward, so moving forward with it, um we have to, we have to communicate before we're purchasing anything if this is a shared situation. So I think that before a purchase happens out of the shared fund, we need to be communicating with each other's boards, um. And. I don't know exactly what we're going to do with, so we have to take a look at what was purchased from Blanford. And look at, can it be justified as shared funds, and if not. Where else, if if it's not able to be justified through that funding, we're going to have to look at other line items.
Oh, we can, if worse comes to worse, we can pull funding from other places.
Okay, so that that is a possibility, I need to do that, but I think that we need to slow down and, you know. And take a look at, make sure that everything that's coming out of that line item is works into that spoken sequence out of the grant.
Well, I think we need to sit there and revisit what we're. What your priorities are, what you need, right?
On the grant, yeah, because I know for a fact that a lot of the confined space and stuff you guys don't have, you should, you you guys have a huge confined space over here, plan. You go in that pit all the time, you have no fault prevention, you have no blowers, none of that stuff, I mean, it's, this this is stuff that. And you have to buy multiples because it's the kind of thing where. You could be doing something here and we could be doing the same thing, you're going to need two of them.
I recall you bringing it up, that's a, it's a very valid point.
I mean. Talk about shared operator thing, it's the kind of thing where. We each have our own, but it's the kind of thing where, hey, mine broke, we need to borrow it, yeah, no problem, you know what I mean? That's when you share it, you know, it's, you're like the backup.
Sure.
But you gotta have one.
Yes, I think that there needs to be like a, something a little bit more like in writing as terms of a policy of like borrowing, right, like, I mean.
Yeah.
Want to make sure that we're clear with that.
Right, right.
I think um we'll have to go through the accountants and see what was um purchased out of that for that line item.
Yeah, that checks, remind you, uh we're putting the card a little before the. The whole purpose of this grant is to share personal services.
Mm-hmm.
If that is going to be the case, then the first thing that, in my opinion, should be happening is that. The two departments, the two towns need to get together and decide exactly how that's going to work.
Okay.
Is it going to be Steve, is it going to be Isaiah, is it going to be both?
Yeah.
Or is it going to be Plan C?
Okay.
Until that happens. DLS is not going to approve any for either community, so. The the issue is really that equipment, and really in both towns, equipment has been purchased prior to. Uh the actual implementation of the shared service.
Mm-hmm.
Which is the sharing of a water op, uh uh the original grant, it was a water operator. Um it morphed into sharing the services of the water operator in training, um there's been some discussion about maybe there's. Two individuals that that the the grant could pay for a portion of, you know, whatever, but until that component of it.
Mm-hmm.
Which is the most important component of it is. Is. Passed out, then. The paying of equipment, whether it's a vehicle, turbidity meters, with other stuff that uh Blanford has also purchased, or Chester has purchased. Is not, in my opinion, is not going to get approved.
Okay.
So did the DLS notify us that we couldn't have that truck under that grant? How did this question come up?
It came about as a result of my contact and Sean Cronin from.
Okay, yes, and he's, and he sent this budget, and no, no time did anyone say we were bound to this budget. You know, it it says uh right here, projected, which which means this could change, and certainly it has changed.
Oh, yeah, well, you guys bought it to rid any meter.
Exactly.
I get that.
Exactly.
What I'm getting at is a vehicle, is that something that's not considered equipment for your plants, is that what they're looking for? I don't know, I'm asking because I've never dealt with.
That's what we've been told.
Possibility.
What I was saying is that this is all ahead of where we need to be.
I, oh, I get it, I get it, I'm just wondering how that came up, and that's, it's through that, that's what I'm trying to find out.
The key is the flexibility in the grant as far as equipment and equipment is locked, because circumstances have changed between then and there. But the spirit of the grant is in sharing and operating, so if we can get that started, we're starting to comply with the spirit of the grant.
Mm-hmm.
And then we can take a look at what equipment we buy, what can be shared or not shared.
Absolutely.
Because it doesn't all have to be shared, we wouldn't have bought three turbidity meters in Chester, they can't be shared, but that was part of it.
Yeah.
Part of the grant.
As you guys get.
And we want some other things, they're listed as outline items, they're fairly minor. Um but if we can get started with sharing.
Okay.
That operator in training, uh I think that we're complying with, we keep moving forward. And again, as as Gordon mentioned, there's there's some uh best practices that we can share with each other, that we can we can burn, and and that's the spirit of the grant, I'm happy to do that.
So I think, so can you guys um work on scheduling a meeting, I would say soon, sooner rather than later, um with both boards, so that. You can be bored with that discussion about water operator?
Our our um commission meeting is the the first Thursday of uh February.
Okay, so.
They can join us.
So maybe do a joint meeting, I think I'd schedule a joint meeting.
Is there a timeline on this?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
What's the timing?
June thirty.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
That being said, and again, I'm not DLS, I'm not John Crumlin, I don't. Speak for him in any way, but this grant. Cycle comes to an end June thirtieth. In my view, the. The sooner that an agreement can be reached between the parties, the better, so that. These grant funds can begin to be spent, technically. DLS could say, you have to spend all this money tomorrow, by June thirtieth, and I don't. Think at this point, there's even a way to spend all of the designated personal, personal services funds, no, no. So, so there's a portion of, of the budget was for the equipment and a portion of it was for our services. And every single day that goes by, where you're not sharing those personal services. Is you're basically depleting your inventory, you know, with personal services, this inventory is time. And so the more time that goes by without an agreement.
Yeah.
The less opportunity there is to actually avail yourselves of this, of these grant funds.
So was it worked into the grant, um, any of the legalities of like drawing up a contract for sharing services?
Well, that's the MOU.
That's this.
That's the MOU, okay, so under the, I mean. Could the, some of those, though, if that was ours, we used to pay for like extra training, if we're looking to like. Put anything into place and we've got extra money for that at some point?
Potentially, now we can, we can make that request. To DLS, there's nothing that's off the table, we just have to be. Transparent and we need to communicate and we need to let them know and, and get, get that approval, so the more. People can talk with each other and cooperate, the best.
So if, the first Thursday of February works for you, we'll do a joint meeting, is there any one extra that we need to be there? Like to help with mediating the discussion, um.
I think the boards can handle themselves and the only person I think will have Steven there because he's gonna be.
Okay.
A, a key player.
I do, yeah, I'm just thinking anyone that would be helpful with the understanding of the workings specifically of.
I think it's just, we gotta work a schedule out when it comes down to it.
Okay.
I mean, and then we need to sit down and think about, you know. Since we're all gonna be there, and I'm not, you know, basically, this is what we're gonna do, set a schedule up. You know, he'll, he'll do this here, do this over there. And then we just start throwing out, you know, if we have the truck, when he's over in there, we, we record miles, you do this, you know, we should get this equipment and stuff, and that's what you're gonna have to do.
So we have to make an agenda for your meeting. So that you will categorically down. The list, everything that you have to buy with.
Yeah, but I already says, first thing here is getting, getting the whole. Payroll, I mean, on the whole personnel. Situation.
So we will have, um, a new TA, we're working with Michael, um, this evening, so he will, I'm, he will be present. I would imagine at that meeting to help, um, guide you guys through any of that as well.
Now, do we, you have a current operator? Do we have one in Blanford? We have a current operator, we have, we have a primary backup. Um, we have Steven who is a twenty hour a week. He's basically doing field work. Um, di- distribution work and he's training with our operator. Three, roughly three days a week. Now, you guys have one in Chester, a, a operator now?
Yes.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, we, we have two.
Yep, two.
Plus the, uh, operator training.
So we are expecting that we won't see any more billings coming through?
No, we, 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 uh, I think last, Ira and I talked about that about what, three weeks ago?
Okay, so we, and we put a hold on that last one.
Which one was that?
Had to do with equipment for the truck, I think.
There's a invoice for three thousand and something.
Karen knows about it. Okay, so you can talk.
Oh, that was the last of the outfitting.
Yeah, so you can check with Karen, um, but we just put a hold on that just.
Well, we're gonna have to pay it, so we're just, we're gonna have to pay out something else, because I can't hold them up for it, it's thirty, sixty days, whatever.
That's fine, um, okay.
So, and, and ultimately, if it's decided by DLS that the truck is okay to be paid out of the grant, then you can do a transfer. Back to, you know, to, to cover everything that, uh. And I suggest that rather than wait until February first. For the meeting, that there'd be some work done ahead of time.
With two weeks, maybe a special meeting for you?
No, no, well, no, that, that's not where I was talking, but. Uh, with Gordon and maybe somebody from Chester, if it's Bob or whoever. To, uh, kind of put together a, a draft plan in advance of the February first meeting. So that once February first comes, the boards meet.
Yeah, I can throw something together and.
They approve it and then you're good to go like immediately.
Okay.
And not have to wait another two, three, four weeks before.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I could get something together, I'll give it to Karen and she can like. Do a blast to. For the boards.
You know, I'm. In a help if you want, I'm not sure it's needed, but if, if you need me to facilitate anything, either as. The interim TA or in my role at PBC, just letting you know.
You know, what I can do is put it together, we could send a blast out to these guys, and what Karen and them do is like they put the empty input back in. And we re, and we re, redo it and send it out again, and then when you guys come in, you. Hack out the last of it, so, that'll give us about. Is that two, three weeks, two weeks? Three weeks, yeah, so.
Three plus.
I think a couple emails back and forth in the next three weeks, we should be all set for. Really serious discussion on the first.
Right, um, and if you guys, Water Department, I mean, if you're ever interested in, I'm once a month coming to select board and. Sort of just meeting with us, give us an update, just one representative, just sort of, and Dave comes weekly, it's fantastic, he gives us a, a data. I know that it's different, I know that you're on a elected board and it's, and it's a different situation, but it is helpful, I think if we just increase communication. Then this stuff isn't like. What, there's a truck, you know, it's really like panic mode, um, I think it'll just work a little bit smoother, so. Great, thank you guys, Greg saves. Thank you for the ice, did you have more?
Well, one quick thing, I noticed on your agenda, we've got approved ten hundred, I have a building that I want. And, and we just got ours to be evaluated, put in our, and they. One of the things, if I want to find.
Yes, our.
We're questioning that.
Yes, we're questioning too.
Oh, good, we're on the same page.
Yeah, we were questioning at the post office, that went up like eight thousand and it's like falling apart, so, I mean, yeah.
Okay.
But I think everyone in town is questioning the assessment of their homes, because I know assessments have gone way up and. I'm getting texts from people in town saying, why has this been up seventy thousand?
Yeah, fifty-five thousand dollars in thirty years.
But as I, hope we all know, but as a result of evaluations going up, the tax rate has gone down, so the tax bill.
It worked out well for us.
It's still more.
It's still went up.
Well, but if the tax bill.
Cause our tax rate went down, yeah, our tax rate went down.
That's just a way to steal from me is to raise the house up, if you lower the price.
Oh, my God.
Crazy.
That's a little.
Yeah, but here's the thing, we noticed when I, when Chris was here, we did ours, uh, last year. And I looked at it and I, I had to laugh because I had our water treatment plant. That hit like, like two and a half million, two and a half million dollars, the skate off pay was almost that, it's like a fifteen and twenty million dollar project. If you had to do that now, so we had to change that because that was just way.
Sure.
Out of whack.
Yeah.
So.
So yes, we're also questioning.
Okay, good.
Thank you for coming.
You wanna bring that up and I'll show them what we got?
Oh, did you guys have more?
You have one more.
Okay.
Well, you, you have something else on here that invoiced discrepancy.
Oh, with the highway department. What is that?
That's what they will be. Got. I, I'll, anyone want to go with this?
Okay. Wait outside.
All right.
Dave, do you wanna come down, it's highway, and we're gonna, we'll do, go over your report next, because I'm imagining that you're exhausted.
Well, the highway man there, anybody tell me, in one Beagle code, you're gonna be, um, Bob today?
You guys got sent a letter.
I'm sorry?
We didn't get a letter from you guys.
Yes, you did.
No, I don't, we didn't see one.
It was handed, it was hand delivered from Corinne.
Who did you send it to?
It was hand delivered by Corinne to who? She told me, she didn't tell me exactly who, I didn't find out who.
None of us saw it, because we all reached out talking about it yesterday. Um, but we will talk about that in a second, Stacy, hold on, um. Sorry, that's, um, yes, go ahead, what was the discrepancy with highway?
Uh, before we get really in depth and, and so on and so forth about, you know. Just that or anything else, I, I, I'll obviously split it with you, if you want to.
What is that, what are we discussing?
The digging over here on, on the Russell State.
Oh, the, okay, so yes, I saw that in question, it was about seven thousand, is that right? So this is the water, uh. Week.
We, we, we feel that no service was provided to the water department on this. Uh, thi- this is a bill from L B Corporation.
Yeah.
Who called the leak?
Well, this is the one that we've been discussing, yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna bring us back to, uh, October fifth. We had a, a water commission meeting, Dave was there.
Yeah.
PJ was there too.
And, and we discussed Russell State Road. It appears that there's water coming up, I mean, there, there is water coming up, but. After this meeting, we went out and I listened in, in the basement in two houses with listening equipment, and it was. I, I said there's no leak, there's no water leak.
Okay.
But not everyone was convinced.
Okay.
So we discussed it and said, all right, well, we're gonna have somebody go out there and dig it up. And we said to Dave, well, what happens if it's not? The water, and he said he'd pay for it. And that's, that's where we stand. It was groundwater.
That's groundwater.
Yes. And, and it was taken care of, this, this corporation took care of.
Probably three drains in there.
Coming from individual's houses, right?
No, no, it's just groundwater.
It's from, wait, you're saying not from the park, you're saying the park. Where was it coming from?
Oh, the house next to, next floor, number.
Two white pipes are coming out of the ground and everything, yeah.
Oh, they're coming like from a French drain.
Yeah.
Yeah, a French drain that goes around a separate system, drain the water out, and the other pipe was from his, um. Some pump.
Mm-hmm.
Which is kinda strange, because he invited me in, we looked at it.
Yeah.
He had nice little drain around the edge of the foundation. Um, look at the sun pump, there was no water in the sun pump to go off the drain, but there was water coming out of the pipe.
Yep.
I know at one point, they put one along the back of here. Down through that ditch where the stone is.
Yeah.
When, cause the water runs off of it.
But it's still, it's still flowing.
I know, so.
Through the copper pipe.
But I know they put some pipes in there when they put the ball field in, when I was kidding. So I'm not saying it's.
So it was discovered that it was coming from an individual home?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's been, it's probably been plugged for.
So it was drained and now it's not?
Uh, it's been plugged. Johnny Pease used to take care of it, you know what's happened with him in the past, well, he died last year, and five, six years before that, he just. He couldn't do it, he was broke, yeah.
So now we're looking where to take these funds out of, and it got billed to, did it get billed to the water department?
Yes.
Well, it looks like it just says Town of Blanford.
Yeah, it says Town of Blanford, but it wasn't specific.
Okay, um. Can this be something we do? As a unforeseen. Situation, or do we? Or, or we paid on a highway and then we look to reimburse, um. Replenish it when we have funds to move around?
Yeah, I mean, according to Dave, you. Yes, you can pay the bill, you have funds currently to pay the bill. Uh, it'll, I'll wind up short.
Yeah.
Towards in. Towards the end of this year coming up, with, you know, spring rolling around and all that stuff.
So I'm, well, I think what we do is we pay it up the highway and then. When you're short, we start to look.
Yeah.
Where we can replenish with unused, when we can move, when can we move and?
Well, the last sixty days, you know.
June?
Yeah.
May.
I mean, if your, if your reserve fund is all used up, then you can just cancel between accounts in the last sixty days without having to go to town.
Okay, so I think we'll have to do that. Sorry, Dave.
Maybe, it's, it's, you know, that's mostly a thousand dollars.
I know.
You know, I mean, if something happens between now. And May, you know, I'm, I'm gonna end up being short.
We, we always have reserve, if, if there's some, an emergency, you know, or something, um. I don't wanna drain your account, but that wasn't, it was a big deal, because we were really concerned about that icing off being a bus route and a main route. Um.
It's a problem that the land.
Problem.
Yeah. It was nothing that the landlord did purposely.
No, no, I mean.
No, I didn't.
If, if you, so, once it was all. Opened up, um, actually, there's. Two coming out. Next to Mrs. Pease's house. There is two at Mrs. Pease's house, and she should have a third because the backside of her house running down through. The next house down has a runoff too, has a drain coming out. And, and that's just.
Two, three houses, the stinky water?
No, the one, uh, right on Russell State.
Oh, Stone's house?
Yes, yeah, yeah. So it was like, holy cow, then you figure right now, can't.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
And you'd see, you know. All the catch bases out there and you see all these little drains running right out dumping into it, and it's like, holy cow.
Yeah. Sorry, I know you really wanted it to be a water.
Really glad it wasn't. Well, you gave her try to get them to pay half. I'd like to get credit.
I mean, you gotta try.
Every other one we found, so that's, we're good.
Yeah, yeah.
I bet it cost more than that though, didn't it? We haven't gotten a bill yet, so, well, two around private property, so they weren't us. We had a saddle strap break right in front of four, uh, four, uh, sixteen, Cameron, right in front of Chet's old house. Just failed, broke. Yeah, they said it too, they said they never, I haven't seen something like that before, it's just probably like when they forged it, it was a. Yeah.
You guys have more for us, or?
It was cold.
That's.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
For playing. All right, Dave, what do you got for us, Karen last good?
Oh, yes.
Did you see your compliment that the roads look good?
They did good, they. Really good.
Um, since Stacy's here, do you wanna start with Beagle Club, uh, did you find out Stacy who, what it was handed to?
Corinne put it in the secured lockbox, uh, the secured mailbox at the beginning of the year, this year in twenty twenty-four. And it was addressed to the highway department.
Okay, uh, it, so, whatever happened to it didn't get through to us, but, um, so. We'll work now on the premise that we have one. Um, did Beagle Club get plowed?
My husband plowed it.
Oh, well, thank you.
Yeah.
You know, because, no, they went up through. And it was plowed, and the guy said, what are you gonna do, I says, well. At the end of the storm, go up there and take, take a peek and see what it looks like, he says, well, I went up there and it was plowed.
My husband plowed it so we could all get out.
Yes.
But that, that was this morning at five thirty when he left.
So my instructions, just, you know, to Dave, when he texted me yesterday, was I reached out to everyone to see if there was a letter, we didn't have a letter, and so I said. We can't not plow it, Dave and I both agree, we can't not plow, just save it until the end and then we'll touch base going forward to see if there's a letter, you know.
Okay, so. In the future. Should. Cause I, cause I, I will personally bring in the letter, it like, say. October.
Yeah, that's fine.
And, and hand the letter, do you want me to hand the letter to the select board?
Yes.
Because.
It's, uh, go ahead, Joanne, you guys have a better meet?
Yeah. Please, hand it to me, because I save it for them, and I bring it up at the meeting when the, when the time comes.
Okay.
And if you want to, you can also have, make two of them.
Okay.
And with with the highway department on it. Okay.
Okay. So do you want, since the, this one has been misplaced, do you want? One for this year to put in the file? Cause I'll have her printed out again.
Maybe we probably need one.
Yeah.
Um, but.
I'll have her printed out again.
But just know that we're now gonna work under.
That, that's fine, I'm, my, my husband got us so in and out, if they could just. Open it up a little when you get around my golden sack, cause I mean, an ambulance couldn't even fit through there, if there was, you know, that's my only concern.
Of course, yeah.
That's.
Maybe.
I, we can, we can get it in and out, we all have four-wheel drive vehicles, it's just the fact of any, anything big had to get up there.
Everybody, everybody has four-wheel drive. That's awesome.
Everybody has four-wheel drive.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody has four-wheel drive.
We live in Blanford, we live in Blanford.
Fifty-four years, you have four-wheel.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dave, spill us in.
Go home. Um. Let's see, okay, we'll start out with Franklin County. Regional Council of Governments, it's time for bids again.
Okay.
So. This is to authorize. Most likely, I'll know, somebody left a phone.
I will be there.
That would be that.
Um. We do this every year for the bids that we all, they submit for us.
Okay.
Black hat.
Everything, yep. Everything. Um. I'll let you read all of it if you'd like to, uh, page three and four is most important stuff. Gonna make copies for it. No, because. I'm like, Chris, there's some time.
So this is like, uh, oil and all that stuff?
No, that's not, that's later on.
Okay.
This is just all the aggregate.
Oh, the salt and stone and all that stuff, okay.
That's all. Um.
Okay.
All the good stuff.
No. Oh, just write all the good stuff.
All the good stuff.
Uh, loan, coal patch.
That's, that's some old.
Um, yeah.
Hot mix. I'll give part of the materials.
Okay, yeah, there you go. Okay, do you need us to do anything with that?
Yes, please.
What do we do? What do you need to do?
You can scratch my name across the first part and the bottom section of it, sign it.
So you just need me to sign it so that we are motioning to allow you to go to FERC?
Yes, I'll be responsible of. Everything.
So make one.
I just finished reading it. You just needed it, please, well, I didn't know it, but.
It's feeling like a long night already.
Yeah, huh, listen, it's only takes two hours to watch sixty minutes. And I I just, I did return the message to you this morning.
Yes. I just want, I meant to reach out early and just make sure everyone's doing all right out there, see if anyone needed.
Nine, nine, nineteen hours.
Yeah.
There you go.
Thank you.
You text me, I wasn't bad.
Oh, okay, yeah, never answer if you're.
I got a question for you.
Sure.
So who plowed the post box?
Oh, quite a couple people.
Horrible, they took five parking spots right out of the side, they plowed the snow right against it. And that's not your fault because they didn't move the fire truck?
So they go and push it in there.
They were waiting for somebody.
Yeah, well, you lost five spots there. It's out, it's gotta be out from there to here. So I'm just, I don't know if you can move it with a loader or get the truck moved or, cause it's gonna rain now, so you don't want to be driving.
Well, I'll be out on a couple days, I doubt it.
I remember that night, Adam, that's gotta be.
We speak that so much, I mean.
And whoever parked the truck or the dump truck was here.
We know who that was.
Why didn't you do that?
Yeah, she was out there, she was out there doing donuts, I'm sorry.
That must have been Nazi.
Oh, it was, I think he used it someday, so I, I very, very appreciate it, putting the truck down there makes cleaning up a whole lot easier. Except for the, uh, ask, when you can phone by, I'm thinking.
Um, so I make a motion to have Dave Waldron, whose title is Highway Superintendent for the Town of Blanford. As the official signatory for all highway construction service contracts in which we choose to participate through FERC.
Second.
Any discussion? On paper?
Alright, alright.
So that's all signed for you, Dave.
Okay, thank you. Welcome down, good.
Sorry, I need more steps, I'm way under today.
Oh, no.
Sorry. I, I don't know if this is.
So.
I'm light.
Um, number two.
She didn't leave you.
Um.
So she didn't.
Got Bryce from Gil Engineering. Well, spoke work on Beach Hill Bridge.
Okay.
Alright, um. The price amounted to a hundred and thirty thousand, five, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. In engineering and design and all that stuff. The grant was a hundred thousand. Um, I'm not sure. What Chris's thoughts were on your, at that time, we didn't know how much it was gonna be. But I know he was talking Springfield Water about, they said they would help with it.
Right.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if they're willing.
Pay thirty thousand dollars?
Thirty thousand and change, that would.
Probably fifty thousand and they say thirty, well, thirty, come on.
I got your phone.
I'm just saying. What's wrong with that?
Is, oh, there's cats on that, there's a scare.
But.
Yeah, I mean, they did say that they would.
Yeah, yeah, basically, they would.
Yeah, so tell them we're looking at a deficit of.
I haven't, I, I didn't.
Hi, yeah, just.
You always start high.
Okay, so yeah, no, yeah. He does deficit.
Oh, David, how, how much, what's the estimate for the engineering?
Hundred and thirty thousand.
One thirty, okay.
Well, did he give a total cost of anything, Dave, or? They broke it down. I got it. Old age.
And that's a spring project? Right?
Well, it's gonna be a long project.
Yeah.
It's gonna take roughly up to two years. For all the engineering permits and all that stuff. And once the engineering is done, it has to be submitted DOT, so they can go over the engineer and make sure everything's good.
Okay.
So.
So that grant is just for the engineering?
Engineering, let's see here, it's. Uh, data collection, review and coordination with the town, site visit, that's one part, plans. Um, key plan, locusts, street index, um, I'm probably speaking French to everybody. You know? But, uh, yeah, that, um, if you want a copy, you can have this. If you needed to look at it.
Okay.
Um. So. I guess the new town administrator.
So I, I was gonna introduce Michael, uh, yeah, so Michael, Mike.
I think you had before, sort of. Yeah, I think in the hall.
Yep, exactly.
Okay.
Do you prefer Michael or Mike? I think.
Mike is good.
Mike. And will you pronounce your last name for me so I know?
Slazek.
Slazek. Um, will be joining us eh, the end of January.
Okay.
So we are happy to have him and I said, yeah, if you want to listen to a little bit, not too much drama, but a little, this was more dramatic than most of our meetings. Um.
Yes.
You know, this was a good one to. To get some of this. Yeah. No.
Did he sign the contract yet?
We're, we're gonna work on that, we're gonna talk about that after.
You wanna have that first? Don't you tell them about the blood hooker thing? You didn't tell them that?
It's blow.
We're up in the hills here.
Okay.
I've been an apple, it's. I won't say what I want.
I've had about almost twenty applications in.
Wow.
Um, there's a lot from, you know, qualified to unqualified, I got, actually, I got one. I'm not putting any names out, alright.
No.
Okay. Uh, we have one, one resident that interested in it.
Oh, great.
Yeah, a young, a young, young, young man.
Yeah.
Uh, he's about eighteen, nineteen years old.
Oh, that's fantastic, we, yeah.
Um, I, I, I think it's. I think it's, it's a good idea.
Mm-hmm.
Because. There's not a whole lot of. Younger generation wanting to get into something like this.
I think it's a great idea.
And people not wanting to. Come into that kind of a job and. And like I said before, I'm not sure I feel like to do about it, you know, but. Thinking about ten years from now, how many people are gonna be really here doing this kind of work? You know? How many gonna be on the select board, how many gonna be in the water department, who's, you know, so on so forth, you're gonna be looking at, a lot of people that. Have no interest in it, you know?
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea and it's a good time because we're about to go into renegotiations, um.
Correct.
Now, quick question, how many, how many people are you replacing to? Okay. So you have on that. It's pretty much affirmative.
Um, well, no, I, I got, I just sent another email to another gentleman, um. He has, I mean, for what, with some, what license he does, he says that he has wasted, well, that could be a variety of different.
Yeah.
Um, I talked to one gentleman already, he came out, um. Looking for a ride around town, decided everything else, he did work for. Oh, another highway department.
Mm-hmm.
A bigger one. Um, so. He was quite interested very much.
Okay.
So, um.
So you narrow it down and then you'll bring them before, okay, perfect.
Check references. Uh, it actually wasn't open, you know, we do one indeed, there wasn't a. A list of, of references.
Okay, we'll have to just uncheck.
Yeah.
Former employees.
I, I checked Facebook, I haven't seen too many on there of them at all.
Isn't that crazy, I always tell my children to stay on, I said, yeah, social media.
Yeah.
It'll follow you.
Alright, so move on to the next one. Um. The bucket truck, that'll service.
Mm-hmm.
Bucket.
Bucket.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, they were out there doing, oh, the flags, taking the flag down that way.
Yeah.
Month ago?
Mm-hmm.
And the outriggers have plates on the bottom of them. Wouldn't fall off. So, yeah. So, um, I'm serviceable, I'm serviceable, can use it. Uh, took it down to Q's, have a look at it.
Mm-hmm.
They gave me a price, um, almost had it down nine-one-one, because it was like, oh my god. Price.
Why don't you bring it to Blue Ribbon Welding and he'll fix it in the day.
Well, there.
That's something you can't weld.
On the end of the silver, huh, I did on the end of the silver, there is, of course you can weld it. But you'd have to grind it all down and there's not much left there, so anyway. Um, that's what that is. Then. Um, the mini excavator.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I sent you guys an email.
Yeah, I saw the pictures.
That's in the picture.
Yeah.
Yeah. On that. Um, I was really hoping to last it for another. Six, eight months.
Yeah.
Um, it didn't work.
Is this in part of our capital plan?
It is, yeah, see, I, 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 I just put it in. For this, I put it in, submitted it this year.
Okay.
For something up on that, um. I reached out to four people, or four companies, um, I've gotten two back, I just talked to a guy a few minutes ago from Bobcat, he's gonna say he won't have. Um. A quote sent to me tomorrow.
Okay.
So I'm still waiting on one more and then I'll look through it and see that it is and hopefully by. The following week or so.
We'll have three quotes.
Yeah. Three to four quotes on that. Uh, I, I think, um. That, 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 that piece of equipment is very. Important to us to have.
Mm-hmm.
With upcoming projects. Um, like drains, drainage, culverts, you know, and, 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 and any, any of that kind of stuff.
Do you have an idea of how much you think?
The highest one I saw so far, and I, I died, was a hundred and eight dollar.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I saw another one.
That's a price of a good pickup today, Dave. Oh, I know, it's so, so, hundred and eight ain't that bad. It's not that bad.
Did Jeff Lee say that?
I know.
I, I'm in shock, I didn't say I was gonna let you get one, I guess. I checked my face maker still, making sure.
The one, the other, the other one I got was roughly.
We got a Bobcat or a?
I mean, uh, Kubota, no, that was a non-mar, yeah. But the, the whole key is, is that having a stock, that's, that's the thing.
So you need this relatively soon to continue.
I'll, I'll be right to.
Okay.
Yes.
Now. You had spoke earlier about possibly getting a wheel excavator?
Yes. That's in like three years.
So is this something that comes out of, we planned, comes out of free cash or what? Was this part of, no?
It was, uh, it was on the list.
It was on the list, that's something that we had a free cash, we can double that, I just wanted to.
Was just on the capital plan, it was.
Third year, I don't remember what, yeah.
Okay.
We, we got those from.
It's probably on.
I think it was for a couple of.
First, first plan somewhere.
I didn't get it both.
All of his notes, okay. So we'll have to look at that just to see as far as funding goes, what we have, what we planned for and where it's gonna come out of.
Okay.
Okay.
I feel about it.
Yes.
So when I spoke with you last Friday about this, you talked about. Having. A use for this and a need for it.
Yes.
Very, very soon, like, as in. In the next couple of weeks.
It would be nice.
You talked about, this is something that you use multiple days every.
Yes. Every, every dry day we got.
And then we talked about, so what's the short-term plan?
Yeah.
You can't just.
Is there a borrowing?
Right. Well, yeah, we do rental, um, we could also do lease to buy.
Mm-hmm.
Also. Um, I know I looked into that with a grader. That was a few years ago. Um. That was like. Four hundred some odd thousand for that, you know, it's like so many dollars, so much. Pick me so much, you know how it goes.
Yeah, yeah.
On that.
So lease is probably not a great option.
No, it could be depending on.
Is there another town that we can work with, like, would wanna?
Well, the thing is that we can. To, to use one.
To borrow, to rent from another town, I don't know.
Um, I borrowed, I'll be borrowing ours. I'll be just got a brand, brand new one.
Well, there you go.
I, I think he wants to break it first before he.
Yeah, you don't wanna break it first.
Not, not break in, but break it.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, once I get all these quotes and.
Okay.
And go through them and all that stuff.
So, a couple of questions. Would any of the vendors that you're talking with to get quotes from the interested in, um.
So I haven't talked to him because when I was talking to you about that, I already called prior. To everybody to get prices.
Well, it's all right, tell him you want a demo one.
Yeah.
I didn't really touch you about demoing. I mean, what I did suggest is to ask them if they, if any of them have. An arrangement where you can rent.
Right.
Monthly rent with all or a portion of the rental. Purchase of a new one. So not a lease.
Yeah.
But. What I just.
Yeah, rent all.
But.
Okay.
You know, seeing the guys today, they'll, they'll give you something for a month to use.
Yeah, some of them will.
Well, most of them will.
Yeah.
They're, they're wanting business.
I think, yeah, I think that Rainy had done that with something when we were.
Well, I, I, I rented stuff through, um, BLT.
You shouldn't have to rent it.
I know, I'm saying that, that's what I've done before.
Yeah.
Like when we done, when we done the big project.
Yeah.
You know, I had two, two minis, that was fantastic. One at one end, one the other, they worked towards the center.
Yeah.
You know, we needed to do. Um. So. But I'll, I'll look into that also.
Okay.
Your, your new TA spent seven years as the business manager for the. Enfield DPW.
Yeah.
That'd be a really good resource for him.
Now, I'm also using Sourcewood.
All right.
Yeah, I need Sourcewood, I use. Who's that one?
Boston Police.
Boston Police, yeah.
Home of County Commissioners.
I've heard other towns using the, 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 the police for that.
Depends on the equipment they have.
Um, look at the killer.
Sir, look at the killer.
Yeah, I bought a, a sewer jet truck. Recently, yeah. Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's all.
Yeah. A lot of our price, right? All right, you got anything else for us, Dave?
Um. I've been communicating with Palmer paving.
Okay.
Do some pricing.
Mm-hmm.
On one, two, and three loads. Um, one's gonna be the beach hill.
Okay.
Um, I've got. Spoke to you guys about this before, um, from the, from town line. Two, well, yeah, from town line. Grandville down to Louisol, we're gonna do a full depth, full nine yards add material. Then from there down to twenty-three, we're gonna do probably an inch and a half, a two-inch top from top to bottom. And the road will be all done. So I'm getting pricing on.
Not shorter than a bridge in case we're gonna tear it out.
Oh, they, oh, they do that anyway, no. So anyway, that's one of them.
Okay.
Uh, the number two is going to be from. Russell Town Line up to. The very first height.
Okay.
I didn't know where the first height of this.
Is that by Nyberg or Second Division?
No, keep going, there's some sparing.
I just couldn't think.
Actually, you know where, you know where Pat lives?
Yep.
Down below there.
Yep.
Okay.
Right inside.
Yep.
Uh, I'll get a price on that.
Yeah, it's me crazy.
Um, their roads aren't even that old.
Yeah, but it was low in cap. It was low in cap.
Yeah, they didn't get it for us.
Yeah, it was full cap.
And then, um, I had a, um, he's gonna give me a price on Door Road.
Okay.
On Road Road.
Oh, wow, okay.
So tell the people on Door Road if we gotta do it, their taxes are gonna go up. You wanna come, would I look like this, or you wanna just, I'll just add an email to you?
Yeah, emails, thank you. Thank you. You got any more for us, Dave? All right. Oh, I know, and I had a two hours late today and no one's. Oh, it's been ten thirty to three thirty. I'll take that every.
One more thing.
Yeah.
Oh, times up. Um. I wanna reach, let you know that Steve's a water department guy.
Yeah.
Um, he helped us during the storm.
Oh, nice, with clown.
And. It was, it was a guy who had that.
Oh.
Other person there, um, now my question is, he brought it up to me too. Um, so everybody that works Sunday, Sunday is all the time.
Yeah.
How should we approach? With better pay?
Can't do anything but. Just the part.
Okay, hold on. If he's part-time.
He's with, he's with the water department. I hire him in when I need somebody. I have no problem.
It was Karen's phone. I gave, I gave it back to her.
Oh.
Are you missing yours too?
Yeah.
We didn't, oh, that's.
No, that's mine. Hey, Mike.
Sorry.
Before you leave, I got a question for you if you don't mind.
Sure.
Um. Steven brought it up because he worked with us Sunday for nineteen hours. And my guys are getting paid double time for that.
Okay.
Um, so. Are we going to go through and, and do the same thing for him?
I would think that would be only fair.
I, I feel that way too.
Yeah. It's only fair. He put in the time and he did the work.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm for it.
Okay.
There you go, okay.
Thanks, thanks, Mike. Okay.
Oh, no, I'm done.
Are you against it?
Yeah.
Because I've never lived in the real world, I guess.
Rumper over here. All right, um, thank you, Dave.
Yeah.
I heard you grumble.
That was a stomach.
Ira, what do you got for us? TA?
Not, not too much, um. I've reached out to, uh, John. Ben Hunden. Couple of times with heaven's back and getting additional quotes for the, uh. The standby generator.
Okay.
So that's.
Okay.
Um, I'll send out a reminder to the departments this week about submitted a bunch of requests for FY twenty-five.
Okay.
For me.
Uh, somehow, somehow. Um, I brought up the, I have a way to.
I can do whatever.
Best for the LTA.
Okay, yeah, 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 but the money was used up, right?
No, no, that, so that was, that was, um. Uh, best, that was best practice. Different local technical assistance, the LTA, it's true.
That was good, Ira.
That was very good.
So I just wanted to let you know, I know you, there's, you've been talking with Chester about. You know, about, about looking at another shared service charging with fire.
Yes.
And so, uh, Don Henderson did submit a request that we do consider that.
Oh, good, okay. Yeah.
For that.
Great, okay.
Um, and the MI, M I I A. Building valuation.
Yeah.
You know.
Um. I, uh.
Sounds like everyone's questioning that.
So I did get a response last week. And I don't. I couldn't decipher really what he was talking about and I, and I, not me, the message, I haven't gotten her answer back, but. I mean, basically, they just sent back the same document we already had. This is McGerrold, who's the.
Okay.
My rep.
Yeah.
Says, Ira, we are only using a rate under two hundred, new cost as well in the six hundred range and eight hundred dollars for schools. I have no idea what that means.
Okay.
So I. Somehow or another in this email, I think he's saying that. The number's right.
Too bad, there's nothing you can do about it.
But. I, so.
I can't remember what it increased our insurance, uh, I mean. I don't know. There's really not much we can do about it. We questioned.
It's, it's a increase of eight. Eight hundred and twenty-five, I think, something like that. I, I mean, my suggestion is.
Yes.
Hold up, hang that still.
Okay.
Focus next week, then I'll.
Okay.
Considering he reached out, um, later last week, but I haven't.
Okay.
Um.
Will you contract amendments for Pioneer Valley Planning?
Yeah, yeah, the CDBG grant.
Okay, so, um. Motion to approve. The contract amendment number one between the town of Blenker and Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
Second.
For the Community Development Fund. Second, any discussion? Oh, it's right here. So it's, um. Uh, so it's effective through January first, twenty twenty-one. hereby amended to reflect the change. The commission's contract will be extended through twenty twenty-four.
That's it.
That's it. Excuse me, block. All in favor?
I.
Yes.
Back up because you missed warrant thirteen payroll.
Yeah, I know.
Wait till next week, we're trying to.
Trying to keep you on your toes. Uh, motion to approve warrant number thirteen, uh, payroll per payment. This is the one right here. So it's, uh, for twenty-three thousand dollars. Roughly, which is, I think, what they pretty much, I'm sorry. Uh, there's a motion. Uh, second. Discussion. All favor?
All right.
Hi. All right. Um, then we have, oh, so there's the Maya thing. We're holding up on that. Um. We have a forest products trust payment.
Yeah, that was, um, that was really just for information. We received a check for. Thirteen hundred dollars and change.
Okay, we'll take it.
Is the. Payment that, uh. Comes through the. Relationship for the Springfield Water.
Okay. Is that for road stop or no, that's for.
Forest trees they cut.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah.
All right, how much was the problem?
I don't have. Thirty, thirty-six.
He's got it.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't hear you if I started.
That's okay.
Um. We have a fair share of portionment, DOT. What's that mean? What's that about?
Okay.
Oh, that's you?
Well, it is, but it isn't.
Okay.
Remember last year or sometime last year, they, uh, appropriated five.
Oh, yeah.
Fifty million dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, it's supposed to go out to, um, the rural, the rural. Roll, roll. Towns out here, um, and they did the, uh. One of, one of my. Connections say that out of three hundred and fifty-one pounds, a hundred and forty-six of this side will qualify for it.
Okay.
So.
They're gonna do the one about Virgil Lloyd Road? Is that what they're saying?
No, this, this has to do with fund money. It has something, no. See, the next, you'll always have some different. So anyway, this fifty million dollars is supposed to be divided about. Um, population, so on and so forth, and a lot of people. Put up a lot of stuff. So, as you see, now it's, it's all fair share, so everybody. Gets a piece of it. Along with another portion of it also, so.
Okay.
We run, we wanted up to a hundred and seventy-one thousand and sixty dollars.
I see, okay.
Okay. And that's already been. I guess you wanna say added to the account.
Added to chapter ninety?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so if you go to. D.
Yeah.
Possible cover replacement on Route twenty-three. That is not me.
That's a state, that's a state road, right?
Oh, yeah, okay.
And by Long Pond. So if you go to Long Pond on left-hand side, you have Virgil Lloyd Road.
Mm-hmm.
So that cover right there, which is invested, am I going too fast? Okay. It's, uh, it's, it's definitely beavered on that side.
Okay.
So it's always overflowing and so forth.
Yeah.
Um, so. If you happen to go into DOT and there. I hate wanting to deal with it, but it's so hard to navigate. But anyway, there's a, there's a section down there of, um, projects.
Uh-huh.
Um. So. They put that project on for. Now. It's called twenty-three, twenty-four. And. It's gonna go through. Sometimes forever.
Yeah.
To injure, it has to be twenty-five percent, fifty percent, seventy-five percent, so it could take. Three to four years.
Mm-hmm.
All right, like for instance, I don't know if you're too familiar with, um, the town of Hemsdale. Um, Middlefield Road, right, goes from Route eight all the way down around, all the way across.
Yeah.
Um. When I was there. And of course, Rainy was there too. Um, that project. They had money set aside twenty-five years ago.
Oh, wow.
And. So nobody was going to the meeting they had on this kind of stuff. So Rainy decided that he needs to go get this, be going on and. The twenty-five, well, twenty-five million dollars back then, there's all. Um, kind of disappeared. For that project.
Mm-hmm.
But he did the project from part of Middlefield to Peru, Peru to, uh, Hemsdale. So you're looking at a roughly, probably a three or four mile, maybe the longer section has to be redone. Um. And that was in the process back in two thousand and probably eighteen, nineteen, that's when it started. It just finished last year.
No, right. So, don't get too excited about this culvert, if you're saying.
Yes.
Okay.
This, this like the bridge down here on, um, twenty and Chester Road.
Mm-hmm.
That's supposed to be redone also.
Don't hold my breath.
Exactly.
Um, speaking about, I was just thinking, uh, the state road, you know that house where it's like built into the side of the cliff? And, uh, it's across from the little white farmhouse where the chickens are kind of in the road, um. Be, right before the Blanford side and going into.
Russell.
Russell.
The driveway that washed down.
Oh, the wash up, yeah.
Yeah, do you know what the state is doing anything about? I mean, their driveway is just washing into.
Yeah, they fixed it three times up.
It's a nightmare. I mean, I just wasn't sure if, if they said anything, it's just.
They put a drainage ditch down along the edge of the driveway.
Oh, you did.
Yeah, and kind of. Headed it toward a drop basin.
Yeah.
But it's, it's such a hazard. We had rain and then ice one morning and I was like, they're right out in front of their house. It's just sheer ice.
Yeah.
And I was thinking that, I don't know, we should reach out to DOT and be like, what are you doing about this? Because it's, it's an accident we need to happen. It's on a corner.
They had almost the same problem in Beckett. Um. It was called Well Road.
Mm-hmm.
And a lot of water would come down and race straight down the road and across twenty.
Yeah.
And, um.
I don't know how this house was even built, I mean.
I've been there forever. People complained about it, I don't know, I, I mean, for years and nothing was done about it.
Yeah.
There is. The town administrator, Rebecca.
Uh-huh.
Hi.
Um.
You know it?
Not really. Has, has a few connections here and there.
Okay.
And DOT was out in probably within.
Need a little to make that connection.
A couple of weeks to come out there and everybody was surprised how they got there so fast.
Yeah.
So. And they're looking at ways to repair it.
Yeah, yes.
So.
All right, well, if they.
They actually put millions in on that one for a little bit, yeah.
It looks so bad.
Well, it's got a, and that, and that, that cleanup box is full of crap. From the first one.
All right.
So I told the guy that owns it, I said, go down there, you lazy. And clean that out, so when the water runs out of here, it goes down there.
Yeah.
I was not that nice.
So we have to decide now if we wanna go into executive session or not, so we have, um. Michael, do you wanna come on down? Mike, sorry, I had any questions also. He said Mike. Like, I remember that. Oh, Dave, did Booms not happen to ever reach?
At this rate, we'll never go.
You know, Michael too, my, my last boss absolutely refused to call me.
Oh, you might. Well, Christopher was Christopher. And so some people will call Chris, but I'm trying.
I'm calling Chrissy. Let's go, Bob.
Um, so, um, we're ta, we're talking contract. I don't know if we have to go into executive session to. Um, negotiate contract, because I think we had already pretty much agreed on.
There was one change, wasn't there?
It was a great change.
Huh?
It was a date change.
No, no, I thought you wanted something else.
Oh, I just wanted to clarify, um. You mentioned professional dues, I wanted to know if that would cover my bar dues.
Yeah, that, and so.
Well, you for the tariff.
Yeah, was that fine, that was fine with Jeff and I, are you okay with that?
I'm fine.
Okay, so, yeah, that was fine with us.
Yeah.
Do you want that in book, that specifically in the, in the contract, or?
Mike, do you want that in the?
I think that would be.
Okay.
And what do you, how do you? Call it actually barring.
Barers, yeah, it's not bar association dues, that's bar dues, they're mandatory. What's that?
Basically, some of them were just saying.
Bar association is sort of the, uh, the members' club, but you don't have to join it. It's, uh.
Oh.
The bar is mandatory.
Right.
It's a lot, it's, it's basically a license fee. Um. Now, there was another, uh, another thing I noticed here, it says I can't hold any, uh, elected office, and I assume that would be in the town.
You're not, you don't live here, so you couldn't anyways.
No, he, in Love Low is the moderator, right?
Yes, but I believe I'm going to have to resign anyway, because, uh, by, by, by law, uh. You have your town meeting on the first Monday of May.
Yes, is that still our first Monday of May, we're still doing that? First Monday of May is our town meeting, is that right?
It's staying, could you, it's, because I, when I read your bylaws, it's.
Well, it should be changed to June first.
Okay.
We made changes around COVID, where, yeah.
I didn't know if that was a bylaw change or.
Process everything so we can.
Yeah, it was just working better for us, in terms of, um, electing people, no.
First Monday, it was the budget.
The budget, okay, yeah, so I don't know if that still applies, if you still will have to.
Well, that's up to you, I mean, you can allow me to continue to serve on it.
Yeah.
Because you're a completely different town.
Was it just elective in town?
Town meeting is the first Monday, and the second Saturday is election, and this year, they come Monday, Saturday, back to back.
As long as it's not the first Monday in May, because that is.
The Secretary of State's office for perusal and approval, like the Senate.
Okay.
They lost it on us.
Because I was anticipating having to resign, because it can't be in two places at once.
I, I don't see there's a problem, I know you can't have two paychecks from the town. Part town.
No.
Yeah.
Well, well, I'm just saying. Hold on. It's like that for me.
What part did you, is that?
Get both offices and get two paychecks.
Um, I know it was in there somewhere.
Yeah. No, it's a if, I, no, I said, he's not even in the.
No, 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 um. It didn't say an elected office of this town.
Okay, we can clarify that in here.
And certainly it would be with your permission.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, I don't think.
I would suggest you put that in if it becomes in any way, uh, a problem for a future board, I think that I would respect that.
Put that in, that's fine with me, I have no problem. You got it?
No.
That's fine. Um. Yeah, so I don't, so, okay, so this is, here we go, then, January twenty-ninth to June thirtieth. Ninety twenty-five, so this will be just a partial.
It's basically a year and a half, or a little less than a year and a half, plus a, an option to renew for a year, I believe.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's.
Did you have any?
That's not an issue, I mean, if you're not happy with me, you're gonna get rid of me, and it's just the way it works.
See, I will do a six-month, um, performance review and, you know, touch base then. I'm sure, well, obviously, we'll touch base in a long way, but that'll be when we have that discussion, um. Yeah, if there anything else that you guys. And if we need to discuss, I mean, we can go into executive session, it's an option.
I have no problem with anything you talk about, no.
Okay.
We're good, we're good.
I'm.
No, we didn't sign it, that's what we're doing now, so I just have the draft, if you want, wait, because you made a couple of changes, and we'll approve it, and I'll officially sign it.
So I've got, I've got it right here, I just added the bar dues.
Okay, and.
Uh, there's, you had a couple of typos, I corrected one of them, I don't remember the other one, if you want, we can.
Did you just, um, put in there that the elected, it was just elected official in this town?
Yes.
Can you make that?
Yeah.
Tell me what page that's on.
Yeah.
I got a floor, is it slow stone disability, do you do that?
Yeah. Yes, I did.
And then on the law, the valley company.
The Vietnam?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very good, good job, Jeff. I don't see anything with the.
Just, and another clarification, I have one other question, personnel time, uh, does that have to be taken as full days, or can be taken as hours?
I think ours is.
Yeah, I thought we were four hours. No?
We personnel pay. We said to three personal, um. Yeah, I think hours, I think Christopher had done some with hours.
Yeah, yeah, he did.
Hours is fine.
Job did too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, neither one of them are here now.
I'm just trying to think of what we've done in the past, but yes, that's fine.
All right, straight.
All right, um, so you're gonna.
Rainy, I'm still looking for the.
Election. Anyway, um, control F. There you go. Um, Mike, are you interested in going to the Boston, the MMA?
I think I'm going to be, that's before I start, isn't it, what's it?
It's coming up sooner than I thought, isn't it? I usually go, I can't take a Friday off of work this year, um, so I'm not gonna make it, so I don't think we're gonna have.
I, I usually go if I can, um, depending on the various towns that I've been in, some were against it, some were in favor of it.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, I, I think it's quite useful, I've learned.
Yeah, I do too.
Interesting things there.
Oh, you will be there? I was gonna go on just the Saturday, but I found that the Saturday is not, it was not really as much, well, it's really all kind of on Friday. If there was just some way to be able to go and not have to take a sick day, I would do it.
The only thing I'm, that's interesting on Friday is when they, they have the, uh, they vote on the Maya rates.
Yeah.
Uh, which is something you're gonna learn, I'd say, anyway.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I, I have enjoyed going, and going to the women's luncheon is always nice, it's, it's good speakers. But my co-teachers are going on maternity, and she's due that day, so I can't leave, but I'd be like, yeah, my principal will probably not be happy.[1560.42]